Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 7th, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. If you're tuning in, that means you got the message that we are now starting at 6:00 PM for our business meetings from this day forward. So hopefully, we're not missing too many people. But I just need to make some points for the record. We have a quorum with our Mayor Protem Gilman tuning in remotely. Hello, Mayor Protem. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to take a moment to invite forward our new Sheriff Derrick Sanders. He wants to come up to the podium, make some remarks. Sheriff Sanders was recently elected in November and has hit the ground literally running. And so we're really pleased that he made some time for us tonight.
Yeah, no, thank you for having me. I wanted to get out here a little bit sooner, but it's been a little busy in the community. And then you throw in the legislative session and everything that's going on right now. But I'm glad I was able to make it out here. I'm pretty familiar with everyone on this council because I spoke with you during the campaign. And it's kind of cool to see how a lot of the things that we spoke about during the campaign are kind of coming to fruition. We've already seen partnerships with the City of Olympia that didn't prior exist, which I think is pretty cool to see. And this is obviously just the beginning. Made a lot of friends over at OPD, just trying to get things kind of settled in. And I'm learning as I go. I've made some mistakes already. But you know, that's, that's part of the process. And you know, it was funny meeting with council member partially during this whole thing. You know, her and I sat down here across the street at the coffee shop and we were talking about policing. And what's that? What is that going to look like in Thurston County moving forward? And we had the conversation about the scope of Olympia right now and how Olympia is viewed through the entire county. And obviously, it's a little unique because I'm responsible for the whole county and then you guys are responsible for just the city. But there's quite a bit of overlap there. And one of the things that Lisa mentioned to me that I didn't realize it was something that I was living, but I didn't really have the ability to put it in my own words. She said, you know, if there's someone that you find that you agree with 80% of the time, you should probably marry them. And that was a great, it was like how I, how I view myself in this role. My job is not to come up here and agree with every single person 100% of the time. If we did, we should probably go find an island together. Contrarily, I think what's most important and my biggest scope is the sheriff moving forward is the things that we do agree on, we have to knock those things out of the park. Every single thing that we can find that we absolutely agree on, we just, we have to knock that out of the park. The public expects that from us. And then on the other things that we don't agree on, there's always going to be a compromise that we can find in the middle. And I think that's the key on how I plan to move this office forward, not just with Olympia, but with our other cities, with our other affiliates, with the state government, even though we're not getting along right now, and all these other entities. And so that's kind of my vision moving forward for the sheriff's office and I'm excited to work with the City of Olympia. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the day? It comes from Madron.
Yeah, I just want to congratulate you in this role. I know you've been there for a little over a month and I see you going a mile a minute and really delivering on the things that you said that you would do as sheriff. And just so you know, we don't always get along with state government either. So it happens. But congratulations, we're happy to have you. And I'm really looking forward to seeing the collaboration between OPD and, and your office.
All right, Councilmember Quinn.
I love state government. I do. We all, you know, it's so interesting. At every level of government, we all have so many pressures for so many different sides. And I think that the right answer is always some sort of amalgamation. So it's actually, I think it's, it's a really wonderful thing when you get to a point in a relationship and in a partnership where you can, where you can have a challenge and then get to the other side of it. So I hope that you get to the other side of it soon. And I think it'll be stronger for that. I just wanted to say thank you so much for coming here again this year already. I think that sometimes I hear you selling yourself a little bit short. You know, it's just February. It's just February. And I think that you're just out there doing your best. I see you at a lot of different community events. You've been here at least twice already in council chambers. And one time where, you know, you didn't even get the mic really. Well, impromptu, you did. But it wasn't planned and showing up and supporting our Olympia Police Department, and I really appreciate that. I think that you are a breath of fresh air. I, I've also talked to some folks that are in the sheriff's department and it seems like folks, some folks are like, they're not sure what to expect. But many of them overall seem like they're welcoming what's to come. And so I think that's really, really great. So many congratulations. It was a big deal what you did and you have a partner in us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Payne.
Yes. So first of all, I just want to give you a shout out for your incredible social media presence that you have. Because in a way, it makes you accessible, I think, to our community. And you're using that medium to explain a lot of the things that are happening, even at the state level that I don't think many members in our community quite understand. And through, through your, your presence on there, you've been able to explain exactly what is happening at that level and also explaining your position on it and also explaining why it needs to change. And so I appreciate that. And you're just doing an excellent job. As it was already said, you're, you're everywhere. I see you everywhere. And just a job well done so far and definitely look forward to growing our partnership with your office. And just excited about what's ahead of us and what we, what we'll be able to do together. So, thank you.
All right. And next, Councilmember Partially.
Thank you for being here. And I will kind of refer to Councilmember Wenz, the fact that you've been here twice. And I, this two times for the sheriff in six years and you've done it in your first couple of months. So thank you. I also say someone who's willing to admit they made mistakes is going to be a great leader because that's how we learn. And your partnership with OPD is greatly appreciated.
All right. Thanks again. Now we're going to go on. I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have an agenda that takes us to special recognition. This evening, we have one item, but it's a very special item. And that is a proclamation that we're going to read that is recognizing Black History Month. And then we're going to invite forward a community member and one of our staff members to talk about some of the great things we have planned ahead of us. So I think I have this proclamation being started by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. Whereas in February, the United States recognizes and reflects on the sacrifices, contributions and achievements made by generations of African Americans in the storied history of our nation and acknowledges the ongoing struggle to keep America's founding promise of a more perfect and equal union. And
Whereas the African American experience is woven into the historical fabric of the Pacific Northwest. From York's full membership in the Lewis and Clark Expedition through the first African American pioneer in the Northwest, George W. Bush, who established Bush Prairie, now known as our neighbor, the city of Tumwater, and on through today. And
Whereas the history of the city of Olympia be far less rich and diverse without the contribution of Olympia's African American residents such as Rebecca Howard, the beloved 19th century entrepreneur who owned and managed the popular Pacific House in downtown Olympia. And whereas 3% of the Olympia population is black or African American. Of the 9,000 new Olympia residents added between 2010 and 2020, 11% were black or African American, which suggests an ever increasing population over time. And
Whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Godwin Woodson, noted black scholar and son of formerly enslaved people, founded the Association for the Study of African American Life and History and initiated Black History Week on February 12th, 1926. And whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month and is now celebrated all over North America. And
Whereas the observance of Black History Month demands our attention to the continued need to dismantle racism and build a community that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas our community acknowledges the systemic racism perpetuated by individuals in our nation's government through slavery, segregation, mass incarceration, police brutality and economic disparity. And
Whereas African Americans have countless achievements despite these past and present cruelties. And whereas the city of Olympia proudly embraces the cultural diversity of our community and honors organizations, families and individuals of African American descent and appreciation of their invaluable contributions that continue to enrich the history and culture of our city and unite and sustain us as a community. And
Whereas the city of Olympia is honored to partner with the Hock Foundation for Research and Education in African Culture and the Olympia School District to host a series of three public events that explore and celebrate Black History during February 2023. And now therefore be it resolved, the Olympia City Council does hereby proclaim the month of February 2023 as Black History Month in the city of Olympia and encourage all Olympians to recognize and honor the African American experience and work toward a nation where all people have equal opportunity to thrive. Signed in the city of Olympia, Washington, the 17th day of February 2023, Olympia City Council, Cheryl Selby, Mayor.
And now it's my honor to invite forward Javon Byrd, who is the director of the, sorry, I'm trying to do two things at once, the Hock Foundation for Research and Education in African Culture. And I'm going to sign this. It's going to be freshly inked for you, Javon.
All right.
Hand this off to you. So you have a copy for your
Hello, everyone. Before I start, I'd like to give honor to my, to my personal ancestors and the collective ancestors of my people, African Americans who were brought here forcibly, but yet have contributed so much to our society. In West African traditions, indigenous cultures, specifically Nigeria, among the Yoruba people, the southwest region of Nigeria. We believe that the earth is the body's final resting place. And it serves as a portal for us to be able to speak to our ancestors and ask them for their support. I'd like to ask my ancestors for support before I start today. And ancestors of all African Americans who have given their blood, who have given their sweat for this land. I give homage to the earth. I give homage to the sun. I give homage to our fathers' ancestors. I give homage to our mothers' ancestors. I give homage to those, those elders who knew that the dream that they were working for, they may not be able to recognize. But their children, their grandchildren might be able to, actually have been able to. I give homage to all those elders who got us with their wisdom. And I say that I will be a strong, powerful steward of our culture and empower others to do so also. I shall, I shall, I shall. Now, I would like to thank all of city council for the work that you've been doing and also for that beautiful proclamation. Mayor Selby, I'd like to thank you for not putting equity in the back burner, but also, but making it a part of your major, you know, your major goals for the city. I'd like to thank city manager, city manager Jay Burns for also being a pillar of support. I'd like, but last and not least, I'd like to thank Olivia. Olivia for working relentlessly to making sure that all the voices of Olympia are heard. The Hock Foundation has been asked by many educators, what's the best way to implement multicultural education in the classroom? And the answer I give them all is, to be honest. While this country has a history of other African Americans, they have managed to somehow fully integrate all of our contributions from the capital gained from free labor to guerrilla warfare tactics that they learned from the Black Seminoles, that they worked relentlessly to try to reenslave, but were never able to do so. To trade agreements, technological innovation, music, and even the stoplights outside that keep us all safe. The United States has managed not only to benefit, but profit from African American contribution while simultaneously participating in egregious systems such as Jim Crow, redlining and other malicious practices of which we still feel the effects of today. However, like my ancestors and many of yours, irrespective of color, I dream of a better future, one in which our grandchildren will look and say, man, y'all was a little bit crazy. One in which African Americans receiving reparative justice packages, reparations like our indigenous brothers and sisters is not scoffed at, but instead seen as a necessity in order to bring true justice to our society. The Hock Foundation is proud to bring such scholars as Dr. Deuff, the author of Slavery's Exiles, a book documenting the maroons. Africans who ran away from slavery, built their own towns and defended them until the end of the Civil War. And also Dr. Joy Degru, the author of Post traumatic Slave Syndrome, to discuss reparative justice and mental health. Because the systematic lynching of black communities in the United States not too long ago and the continuation of unjust sentencing and policing of black people warrants city, state and federal funding initiatives. The Hock Foundation dedicates itself not only to upholding the traditions of black peoples and bringing them to the forefront, but fighting for the economic promises that this country has given African Americans and failed to uphold. I invite you to join in the fight for reparative justice and the fight for a city, in the fight for city, state and country in which our descendants truly know and see the American dream being enjoyed by not just a few, but the many.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. That was powerful. Thank you so much. I don't know whether we want to make comments now or after we hear from Olivia. How about we hear from Olivia and find out about the events planned for the weekend in a couple of weeks and then we'll give some feedback.
Thank you so much to Javon. I mean, it's such an honor to be able to work so closely with him on events like these. So last, oh, for the record, my name is Olivia Salazar de Bro, she/her pro towns. I'm an equity inclusion belonging specialist for the city of Olympia's Parks Department. And yeah, so my role is really to be a partner and work really closely with our community partners to make events like these happen. And so it was my honor to work with Javon and the Hock Foundation this year. Like Javon mentioned, we're also partnering with Olympia School District. And last year was the first year we did this Black History Month celebration. It was virtual. And we pulled it together in, in not so much time, actually. And this year with much more time, we expanded it to three days. So we have an event on the 16th, which is next Thursday. It's going to be virtual. And that was with Dr. Deuff about the maroon peoples of the Southern United States. Friday, the 17th, we have a 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM event at the Washington Center's Black Box. And that's going to be with Dr. Joy Degru about steps to healing and mental wellness within the black community. And then on Saturday, we're having a big community celebration from 11:00 to 3:00 PM at the Olympia Center. We will have performers, we'll have music, there'll be food there from Jerk and Tings, who just opened up a food truck downtown. And the Buffalo Soldiers will be there leading a procession. So we're really, really excited. You can find out more and register for the events at olympiawa.gov/calender. And yeah, it's just really, really grateful for this. Thank you all for your support as always of events like these that help people in our community feel so represented and joyous and helps build community. So thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Do we have some comment? Councilmember Payne?
Yes, thank you so much, Javon. And thank you, Olivia, for all of your work on this. I know we've been kind of going back and forth and it's finally February and we're, we're getting, we're approaching it. So but I just want to say, Javon, your comments tonight, you know, the word history just kept sticking out to me that we're proclaiming Black History Month in the city of Olympia. And you know, you were just sort of speaking to things that have happened to us in the past and present. And I just kept thinking about how we're living in a time right now where it just seems like civil rights is such, is so under attack right now in many different places in our country. We see states eliminating diversity, equity and inclusion and railing against, and you know, critical race theory and things like that. And that makes this month so much more relevant as to why we need it and why we need to just not have a month, but we need to be teaching this to students throughout the year so that we don't repeat our history and we understand the contributions that not just, you know, black people contribute, but these months are designated so that for each different type of group for us to understand what they've contributed to this country. And that includes us. So thank you for that reminder of your words this evening. And I look forward to joining you all and speaking at our community events this month.
Wonderful. Councilmember Quinn.
I am so happy to see you back here again. And, and something tells me I'll see you again after that. But really, just really thankful for your partnership and your continued partnership with the city. I also want to thank Olivia for all of the ongoing work that you've been doing and I love seeing these events come back. Sort of bigger and better the next time around. And it's like, we've really got our groove together. And, and I just love that, you know, it hasn't been just a one time thing. And so as you were talking and then Olivia too, just thinking back about when there, when there wasn't a celebration, you know, and, and I, I think Javon, you always have a great way of saying the really important things and then also making it joyous too. And I think that's really important. When, I think it was the first time, my time on council anyways, that you and Shawna Hawk came and spoke to us virtually, you know. And she had said that, don't quote me exactly, but she had said something about how, you know, she said, black people, it's not just about, you know, we're more than just, not we, they're more than just pain, death and suffering. And I thought that that was like, yes, marginalized groups are more than just the worst things that have ever happened to them. And I think that you always speak to it so well. And I think that with this event and having so many options for people to engage to, just really exciting stuff. So thank you.
Next I have Councilmember Partially.
I just want to say publicly, I, when I entered the chambers tonight, I thanked Olivia because like Councilmember Wenz said, you've really opened the door and you've kept this alive because it was so easy in 2020 to be fired up and then let it die and go back to sleep. And you've helped us stay awake. So thank you. But she pointed out that you, Javon, are who put this series of events together. And I certainly wish that I wasn't a veterinarian on that week because I could certainly go to the first two, but I will be at the third. But I didn't realize the Thursday is virtual. So I may be listening to that while I'm doing physicals on dogs. And I do appreciate it. And thank you for bringing this to us.
And next I have Councilmember Madron.
Javon, I just want to thank you for your ongoing partnership with the city. You bring such courageous spirit with you and just a really, really deep passion. And it's clear just how, how much this work means to you and it's a gift that you give to the entire community. I really, really appreciate that. And now I was trying to think of the word in terms of just how positive you are in your approach to everything. And I think Councilmember Wenz nailed it. It's joyous. And that is infectious. I really appreciate it. And Olivia, thank you so much for your, your ongoing work on keeping this work alive with the city. You have this outward facing role of celebrating with the entire community and seeing everybody in the entire community. And you're just doing such a wonderful job. I really appreciate it.
And next we have Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Thank you to all of the black Olympians for making our community an awesome place. You, you have as much role of that as anyone else. And I love it. And your energy is amazing. And I have to say, I appreciate you saying honesty is the way to approach the conversation because I think that's what we all need to, to really do in our own hearts and minds is be honest. You know, I don't know that I could come up with a tradition about my heritage like you just showed us. And it challenges me even to learn about my own past and what role my ancestors had in this conversation. And I'm sure it wasn't a positive one. And that's why I come to this table. And I love that you are teaching us about your culture before slavery started. Because I think that's the important thing for us as Americans to understand is Black History didn't start with a boat coming here. And, and the longer that is, the more connection we can have to it. So thanks for everything you're doing. And I just, anytime he can be here, I support it. Thank you.
John, I was just thinking that if you ever decided to become a pastor, I might go back to church. Don't worry, mom. I've been going. Anyhow, so thank you so much and you guys have a great evening. Okay, we're going to, it's hard to move on from that. It's so good, so powerful. But we are going to go on to our time on the agenda for public comment. And we have one person signed in remotely and one person here in chambers. So for those of you that haven't given public comment before, we allow two minutes. And I know that's not a lot of time, but you can also submit comments to us through our emails. We read those regularly. So I'm going to start with our remote person and that is Maria Ruth. Maria is traveling.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Selby and city council members and staff. My name is Maria Ruth. I'm the Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the City of Olympia. I'm speaking on item 4C on your consent calendar tonight, which is the resolution addressing the potential impacts to the Olympia Parks Arts and Recreation Department budget. The resolution represents several months of collaboration between and among members of our community, PRAC, park staff, individual city council members, the city manager, finance director and city attorney. I know that you have a lot on your plate. I would call them platters really. So I thank all of you for your time to address and resolve our concerns around this. On behalf of the PRAC Subcommittee who worked on this issue, Alexandria Safik, Daniel Farber and myself, I would like to express our support for the resolution. And thank you, Jay Burney, for responding so quickly to our concerns and drafting a resolution at warp speed. We really appreciate it. We feel the resolution captures the intent and much of the content of PRAC's motion in January. It commits the city to taking action to alleviate or lessen certain impacts to the parks budget. It commits the city council to collaborating with PRAC and to hold a public hearing to solicit community input before deciding on those actions. And just to make sure he's not left out of this on, the resolution also commits the city manager himself to work with staff and PRAC and city council on finding possible solutions. By explicitly aligning collaborators now and committing to a public process now, before negative funding impacts are felt, we will find a win-win solution for our community and our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And in chambers, we have one person signed up and that's Rhonda Morrison. And you can come up to the podium and that microphone is working and you should be able to, your countdown clock's over here.
I remember the process.
Oh, okay.
I have been now housed for two years at Drexel House and noticed a problem that I had noticed before with the downtown homeless community to begin with. And that is we seem to be having very, there's a high population of mentally ill in the homeless shelters that are being, instead of treated for their problems, it's, I'm sorry, let me start over. I was basically asleep for the two years, the first two years of me living at Drexel House. Because I cannot do my job if I'm not taking care of myself. And I volunteer to take care of street kids. Every time I go into a seclusion like this, I come out of it and hear about all the deaths that happened while I was gone. Right now in the Drexel House facility, there is a developmentally delayed man who has already attacked another shelter resident, and I don't feel safe at my own home. And the police and the crew teams say it's up to staff and staff is not handling it correctly. They are coddling the man and telling him he's special and he can do what he wants, basically. So I don't feel safe in my own home. I have to either, they expect me to either go back to my room or go outside. And I'm not the one that started the confrontation. Why should I be punished for it? And I had to be the one to call the police and on it, he's already assaulted another shelter guest. And that was before he started a confrontation with me. And I have already been to the psych ward this year. It's not my turn. Thank you for hearing me out. I'm going to leave it with time left on the clock.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Any questions for staff or comments from the DRS? Councilmember Huen.
Um, I'll start with the last one first. I saw some side stuff happening here. So let's go to city manager.
Yeah, thank you. I've asked Assistant City Manager Rich Hoy to connect with Miss Morrison before she leaves. So he'll, he'll connect with them. We'll get some more information and learn more about what we can do to help here.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for coming here and letting us know that. That's not an easy thing. And I think many folks don't know how to navigate the system and bring it to folks' awareness that hopefully have the, the power to do something about it and quickly is my hope. And, and it breaks my heart to hear that you don't feel safe. And I, I look forward to us finding a solution to that. And then I also wanted to acknowledge, oh my goodness, my name. It has the diacritics on it. That's so cool. That is so cool. I don't know if that's like a new thing, but that's really cool. Sorry. Just wanted to, I just wanted to acknowledge Maria Ruth. I don't know if you're still listening. And you had not only support and a lot of gratitude to everyone that put hands on this resolution that we're moving forward tonight, but also a lot of gratitude to you. You've really stuck with it. You are rightly a big advocate for parks. And, and you do it in such a way that, that I think, you know, really, I guess I could just speak for myself, is I'm really motivated and encouraged to engage and really trust your advocacy for parks. And I, yeah, I just appreciate you being here tonight. And so thank you so much for your work and your advocacy. And I think our park system will be better for it.
Right. I have got Councilmember Partially.
Thank you, Rhonda, for being here tonight and welcome back. I'm glad you came and advocated. It's really important. I just wanted to make a big thank you to Jay Burney and the city attorney and all of the parks advocate. When we heard Sheriff Sanders earlier talk about working together to come to a compromise, this is exactly how it's supposed to be done. And I'm really impressed with everybody involved. I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, PRAC and the Subcommittee. And thank you, Jay and Mark.
All right. That concludes our comments. So we will move on. I now need a motion to approve tonight's consent calendar. So moved?
Second.
Any questions, comments or polls? Don't think we have one this evening. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. So we only have one item on tonight's agenda for other business. And that is to receive a briefing from our police chief, Rich Allen, on the status of our municipal jail facility. And so I will turn the podium over to Chief Allen.
Thank you. For the record, Rich Allen, Police Chief. And tonight we are here talking about our jail. First, before we get started, I want to point out that this conversation is about the physical space where we house our community members that come into contact with the criminal justice system. It's not about alternatives to jail or therapeutic courts, work release, or any of those alternate programs, alternative programs. Those conversations are still on the work plan and it'll happen at a later date. This is simply about the physical condition of the jail. I also want to say and make it very clear that this is about the physical space, not about the employees. Our employees that work there do great work in a challenging environment. So this is simply about the physical condition of the jail. So our current jail and city hall complex was built in the 60s. On the next slide, you'll see more recent picture, but basically it looks the same. Over the years, some interior walls in various office spaces have been remodeled. But the interior of the jail, the cement walls and steel doors have remained largely untouched and still in its original design. A couple of years ago, the Public Works Department commissioned an assessment of the facility. It was determined that the building has outlived its structural lifespan. There are HVAC, plumbing and other structural issues. An example of this is in the summer of 2021 during our, really our historic heat wave that happened. The jail's HVAC system just simply couldn't keep up. And we had to relocate those that we were housing down to Lewis County. Because we were concerned about heat stroke or other heat-related illnesses. The assessment added that due to the structural layout and the physical condition, no remodel or rehab of the facility was available. It would need to be taken down and rebuilt. Since then, the city has worked with an architectural firm to design a new facility that would replace the current Justice Center complex. So the courtroom, defense prosecutor and the jail. That estimate for the facility was approximately 90 million. And the jail's portion of that was roughly 40 to 50 million. So that's the current picture. So it roughly looks the same. Since it was built in the 60s, it is lacking some of the modern feature that other newer jails have, specifically in the housing units. Our housing units lack natural sunlight. Most facilities now have skylights or windows that allow natural light into the housing units. We don't have an outdoor recreation space or a garden space. Distress buttons. Modern facilities have call or distress buttons that are located in the housing units to get staff's attention in the event of a medical issue or some other crisis. Those buttons send a signal to a control room that is staffed around the clock. In our facility, we don't have that persons that are in custody that need our attention simply have to bang on the door. We do have some single occupancy cells, but not as many as needed. And they are located in the back near the housing units. Modern facilities place those single cells near the booking area where the staff is always present with large windows. So there's always observation. Staff observation posts, other facilities have staff posted in areas close to the housing units for ease of observation. And more just embedding with the people that we house. Our facility relies on camera and there's an absolute separation between staff and, and those that we house. And then when you think about the city's mission of moving that are, those that are in the criminal justice system towards wellness, our current facility just doesn't foster and doesn't really relay that sentiment. We currently have a contract within Asqually Jail. We have that contract in place for those who require medical assistance and observation and as well as an overflow and backup for our facility. You can see their mission statement there for the jail, which is aligned with our city values of being people-focused, moving people towards wellness and preparing them for successful release into the community. The current Asqually Correction Center opened in March of 2014, has a capacity of just over 300. So obviously a newer facility has large holding areas, giving those in custody a little more room to move around. Has outdoor recreation where they get an hour of outdoor recreation each day. They have a community garden, so those in custody can grow and nurture plants. Then they use that food in their facility. The technology advances out there. In addition to technology that the modern facilities have, like the distress buttons, control centers and electronically controlled doors, we still have dual lock and key. In addition to all that, those housed have access to tablets or iPads where they can pursue their GED. They can take anger management and substance abuse resistance classes. They can get their first aid cars or other job skills. And there's a lot of pre-recorded seminars that they can take on resume building and interviewing skills in order to prepare them for employment. They have onsite medical service. They have a 24/7, 24 hours a days, seven days a week nursing staff that's present. And the doctor comes in twice a week. They have a pharmacy on site so they can quickly care for the people, care for the people that need it. And amazing, I'm sorry, and the main housing unit does offer natural sunlight. Other benefits include the sharing of liability. In our contract with them, the tribe has agreed to submit themselves to the Washington courts. Simply put, they've agreed to share in the liability. To my knowledge, we're the first ones to have this type of agreement with them. And at least from our legal department, negotiated a very fair contract. And it's actually being used as a model for other WCIA cities. And the Asqually Jail has already been proven successful. The current facility was built in 2014. Prior to that, they had a smaller jail. The cities of Lacey and Tumwater have been using their services for well over 20 years. Since then, Lakewood, Tacoma and Shelton have established contracts with them. So this was tough. This was a difficult decision. We're a small department. We all know each other. This, this was not easy. Recently, I made a recommendation to the city manager to close our jail and to solely use our existing contract with Asqually for housing individuals. Again, this was not easy. I know the impact that this has on our employees and their families, and I'm sorry for that. So why now? Two main reasons. One, I want to take advantage of the corrections, job opportunities in our region, specifically Thurston County. I spoke with Sheriff Sanders about my plan back in January and my concern for our employees. And his immediate response was, "I'll take all of them." He has several openings in his jail. Our HR departments have been working together to try and streamline that process for those that want to go. Second, based on the public works assessment, we are simply living on borrowed time. Sitting around waiting for some type of structural failure doesn't seem like a smart course of action to me. The risk management department director, Business Item E, says something needs to be done. So I've met with the judge, received feedback from the court staff, probation, defense counsel, community court and others within the department. There are still operational and paperwork flow issues that we need to figure out. For instance, we've identified a need to have some type of transport officer, probably three of them to start with. And we're still developing that job description. Other cities have been doing this for many years, so we know it can be successful. Diane Whaley is the Public Defense Coordinator and the Community Court Executive. To me, because of her role, she really speaks for those. And she's the voice of those that find themselves in the criminal justice system. And the voice for those that we house. It was important for me to get her feedback. She is supportive of this proposal, believing that those in custody will have a better overall experience in than the Asqually facility. You can see in her comments there, and she ends with, "This new jail will provide a holistic approach for stabilization for defendants prior to release." The reason and timing for my proposal really has nothing to do with money, but the reality is there will be some significant savings. The asterisk up there is to remind me to tell you that these are just estimates. Don't quote me on any of this. You've all heard Aaron B. Miller talk about the pending bowel wave that's coming due to our body worn camera implementation, the crisis response unit expansion and other city initiatives. Even with conservative estimates and giving myself some wiggle room for any contingencies that I haven't thought of, it's estimated that we will save approximately 1.5 million. Again, these figures are just approximations. And once we get through the upcoming budget season, we'll have a better idea of what the true numbers will be. So to summarize, there is no good time to do this. Anytime we do it is going to be impactful to our employees. And I can't put enough words on a slide that would demonstrate how much I regret having to make this proposal. But it's the right thing to do. To say that it's impactful to our employees is an understatement. And I know that our employees have worked very hard for our community and our department. Now we're going to work very hard for them to get them a really good deal and to ease with their transition. Again, there's no time to do this, but I believe the time is now. Due to our facility limitations, Asqually offers a better experience for those we house. It feels as though we are living on borrowed time regarding the condition of our facilities. And this will not impact any of our therapeutic programs that we have going on. That's all I got. So any questions or feedback for me?
I've got some hands up already. I'm going to go to Councilmember Huen, followed by Councilmember Payne.
Thank you for the information, Chief Allen. So you covered a lot of pros in here, a lot of positive aspects of taking this course of action. Also reiterating, I appreciate you reiterating that the timeline isn't, isn't ideal. And it's a tough thing to do. So I just want to really acknowledge that. I also, I took a tour, as I think probably every single one of us have taken a tour along with city staff into the jail itself. And not only to see the facility, but then also heard a lot of, a lot of reasons why it just wasn't working from, from the staff at the jails, also city staff at the jail itself. And so can you talk to me about the positive aspects for staff? So I, I heard you when you said, you know, trying to have folks transition that, that are correction staff at the city, transition in a thoughtful way and not just, you know, sever their service, right? Because there, there are folks that have been there for, I think probably for decades, you know, for a long time. So, and we really value the work that they put into there and, and really trying to make the best. I think a large portion of their work towards the end there is that making the best possible situation out of a not very good one because of the facility needs. But also I think that there will be some positives for our police department as well as they work in tandem with the correction staff and just overall positives for our staff. And so can you talk to me a little bit about that?
The positives for our staff moving forward, well, especially the corrections officers. If they take us up on an offer to go to another jail, another facility, their, their work environment is obviously going to improve. We are offering them a severance package. If you look at places, since word's gotten out, this isn't how I wanted to roll this out. I wanted to slow, slow down a little bit and take my time, but word got out. So I felt compelled to get my employees in, in the loop. Since word's gotten out, we've gotten calls from three or four different jails. Everybody is hiring, specifically Pierce County. So Pierce County is offering a $25,000 signing bonus. And in addition to that, whatever severance package we have. So they, they're going to come out of this okay if they choose to stay in, in the line of work. As far as the benefits for the police department, that's, that's difficult to say. It's a little bit overshadowed by losing some employees, right? But I do see some benefit. We are, again, none of this was done for financial reasons, but the reality is we, we will have some savings. And I really want to explore expanding our alternative responses, our alternative programs. And I think the, having a transport officer slash whatever else we can think of position would really help with that. Plus, I think it'll help us with recruiting. It'll be an unarmed position, which means someone who's 18 years old can apply. So we can use it as a recruiting tool, get people. So we can use it as a recruiting tool, get people in the department, get to know them and really steer them towards a career in law enforcement. I think there's, there's going to be benefits for the people, or I'm sorry, our officers on patrol, they're going to have a little more resources. Sure, there's more, but like I said, it's kind of overshadowed by, by, by losing some employees.
I just also want to quickly, I hear that it's not, it's not all roses for sure, but it's also, it's also not all terrible. And last year at some point, we had heard from some of the women police officers in Olympia Police Department and talking about women are qualified to do, to do a certain task. And so then they would have to have bit of an undue burden on them to go to the, the jail and make more stops throughout their shift to the jail. And so that's, I think that now with the jail transitioning, it'll take that undue burden off of them. I'm sure there's other things, the opportunities there as well. But so I think that is a really apt point from them and I, even though it's sort of unfortunate how it's all unfolded, as you'd said, I think that, that is, that's no small deal. I think that's, that's, that makes me smile, so.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. The, so we are a small jail. We typically have six or eight people in custody and two corrections officers. And sometimes we have two male corrections officers. And so when we arrest someone who's a female and they need to go in, into custody, we do have a female police officer go to the jail to perform that search. The Squali jail is set up completely different. They have many females on their staff, so that won't be an issue. So, thank you.
Right, next I have Councilmember Payne, followed by Councilmember Madron.
Yes, first I just want to start by saying thank you to Councilmember Wen for your questions and for thinking about the folks who have been working there for quite some time. You know, it's, I just have to say that, just thank you so much for doing often thankless work. And to leave in this way is not ideal. But I'm hoping that you and your families come out on the other side of this and be okay. With that being said, I remember visiting the facility last year. And it was just, I remember leaving feeling like, what are we going to do about this? And, and so I, I really think that the stars have aligned on this one, to be honest. I, I think that this is an opportunity that's presented itself to us to partner with another government who shares similar values. To treat people the way they deserve to be treated as human beings, right? When they're in these facilities and they, and they, they are not to, the idea is to rehabilitate people. And so it's, it's, I'm very much looking forward to this. I, I feel that that this is, we have an opportunity here to, to take this contemporary approach to to how we choose to operate in this space as a city. And so I just want to thank you, Chief, for your recommendation and the city manager for agreeing. And finally, we can see that there's something that we'll be able to do about this to really address something that's long overdue. So, thank you.
All right, next I have Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Cooper. Oh, and Councilmember, Mayor Protem Gilman. Gotcha.
Thank you for this update, Rich. I too have visited the jail and also wondered, what are we going to do about this? And I bet some people in the community are watching this and maybe didn't even know that we have a jail. And why would the city of Olympia have a jail? And it's because we have a certain set of values that we want to make sure that the people in our community are treated with dignity and respect. And I'm really glad to hear that the Nisqually jail shares a lot of those values. I'm curious about, particularly about if a member of our community who's transgender or non-binary, you know, how, how they'll be treated at the Nisqually jail, if you have that information?
As far as I know, they follow the same policies as we do. So, I can't quote that, but yeah, they're, they're in line with those values as well.
Excellent. And I'm also curious, you know, we've had events in our community where we've needed a lot of folks from O P D to have a presence, and we sometimes would draw on corrections officers for that. What, without those officers on, on staff anymore, how does that impact our ability to respond to any kind of event that does need a lot of O P D officers on the ground?
I don't think it'll impact that, especially with those transport officers that I'm talking about. We can utilize them in the same capacity that we utilize the corrections officers. And if there is an event that exceeds our limitations, we're developing a great partnership with the sheriff's office. We have Lacey, we have Tumwater. We, we can certainly get those resources, but I don't think that'll be an issue. The, my vision for the transport officer, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay, excellent. And I'm really glad to hear about the, you know, community service officer type position. I, when I heard about that at the Lacey Police Department, I thought that was a really great opportunity for somebody to try out that kind of a role and see if they want to go to academy. And I'm pretty sure I recall Sheriff Sanders saying that that's where he got his start with the Lacey Police Department as community service officer. I'm, I'm excited to hear about that. Do you have a sense of timeline for when we can expect things to start moving in terms of closure of the jail and employees moving elsewhere?
I don't have a timeline set in stone. I'd say that the latest would be May first. There's some contractual things we have to work through with the corrections officers, and we owe them a thirty day notice before we do anything official. So I'd say May at the latest. I anticipate it probably being a little sooner than that, though.
Okay, thank you so much. And I, I appreciate the humanity with which you're, you're bringing this forward. The employees that have been serving the community at the jail for a very long time are very valued. Employees are valued people in the community, and I know that this is, this is not easy. But I, I, I think that there'll be something that works out for everybody.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and I'm glad that message is getting across because we're not casting anybody aside, right? Everyone has a job that's available to them, and there's other opportunities, opportunities within the city that H R is looking at as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I want to start by lifting up that same humanity that Councilmember Madron did, both for our employees, but also I would be willing to bet that you could go and find videos about police chiefs talking about jail and corrections, and none of them would be as humane as you just were in this presentation. Like you didn't say the bad guys once, you know, and you talked about people as hot in housing units. And I think that is really important as we move forward in this corrections conversation, that we approach everything as the, the residents in our facilities are people. And so thank you for that, Chief. It's really important to me and I think our community as a whole. I was trying to think if the mayor and I have been on one or two task forces to try and close our jail and do community corrections and, and restorative justice as a region. And the thing that we found is the three-legged stool involves the city, the prosecuting attorney, and a sheriff that's friendly to the conversation. And we've always had two of the three. And, and so I think this is an opportunity to really, you know, once we move through this, you know, facilities conversation, to really look at what are the opportunities for the cities and the county to really model and, and show some of the best practices that come from the West Coast in a new and different way around, around restorative justice and corrections. It's, that part is exciting to me. And I actually think that's the thing that brought me here cool-headed today, you know, having been briefed by you last week. The opportunities in getting out of being mired by really our backside being hanging out in, in a liability like it is right now will give us the, the, the opportunity to have proactive conversations about how to make, to make change. Again, our employees and you and the city manager, I think have approached this the best way you can. You know, timing and, and, and your, your desire to go slow was, was difficult. But I, I really appreciate the place you're coming from. And, and even if people are outside of, you know, if their desire isn't to stay in the corrections field, we have other opportunities at the city that are comparable financially for those families as well. And that's also a plus. To me, I think the timing is, is, is now, based on the presentation you've made. Facility needs to be closed as soon as we can to keep both the residents and our employees safe in the long term. So I, I appreciate what you've brought to us. But I know it's difficult for those families. And if, if there's a different story that we need to hear from the Teamsters, I just invite them to reach out to the city council. We have a direct relationship and otherwise, right now, it feels right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next I have Councilmember, partially followed by Mayor Protem Gilman.
I'm going to echo all my councilmates on several points. One, the humanity, thank you, Councilmember Madron, that you've approached this. It's sort of a, we don't have a choice. And you're going to try to make it as soft a landing as you can for our employees. Some of which, as was pointed out to me earlier by Mayor Protem, thank you for that earlier. You know, we're expecting, you know, this study that maybe we would have an opportunity to correct what our current structure is. And I appreciate the humanity you're approaching this whole thing with and trying to make it as soft and give them options. I will say one more thing about that. Having toured the jail, like everybody here, I can't help but wonder, and speaking to the corrections officers and staff when I was the Chair of Public Safety Ad hoc Committee, that they aren't also going to feel a sense of relief once they get over the grief of the job change. Because they're going to go somewhere, they're not having to take people down into a hole where their drinking fountain is over the top of a toilet. And it's dark and there's, there's no light. And I remember one corrections officer saying, if we could just get people outside. I don't want to see these people returning here. I want them to go out and be, have a good life. And I think we will allow that in the future by, you know, getting them places where we're seeing positive changes. And when you described the Nisqually jail, I, I felt this incredible sense of relief compared to what we have. Our jail does not fulfill our values at all. And then the Squali jail does, but I will remain open to any other regional jail option, operations that we could come up with to fulfill our full, you know, goal of restorative justice. I have one question, and I asked it of you earlier, just so that the community knows. The Squali jail is going to honor our sanctuary city.
Yes, yes, they do not cooperate with ICE and they absolutely will honor that status.
Thank you, and thank you for how you're handling this.
And last we have Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I, I, I just really want to, to, to emphasize that in, in the tour that I, I went along with Councilmember Wen and I'm so sorry here. Anyhow, I, I
Councilmember Payne.
And Dante, Councilmember Payne. On, on that tour of the, of the jail and the bright light there was Lieutenant Emerson and Sergeant Hall and the corrections officers. The relationships they had with people who have been repeat, repeat visitors and tenants of the jail. The ways that they were trying to problem solve and make such a a minimal facility work, I just, I, I appreciate that work so very much. And, and I'm, I'm really sorry that, that this, that losing those positions is a consequence of closing the jail doors for the last time. But I, I, I think to that ninety million dollar architect's estimate that the chief spoke of, our, our current facility is just not fixable. So I, I'm in support of contracting to Nisqually. I'm really sorry for the, the staff, especially for the way that this was rolled out. But I, and I hope, as, as the chief also mentioned, that another part of the work plan is to continue to reimagine alternatives for restorative justice that don't include incarceration. And, and I, I hope that we can focus on that work. So it's, it's bittersweet at best, but I, I do support us moving ahead.
All right. And I would just like to close with commending the Nisqually tribe for coming a long way since they first opened that jail. I mean, there were times when we heard stories coming out that it's like, there's no way we would be able to send any of our, our folks there. So when it's really, say I'm pleased about that and that they've actually better positioned themselves to set the detainees there up for success. It, you know, it's really heartening to hear. So certainly I feel more comfortable with people that, that need to, you know, be isolated, will have their own space there as well. And, and it's a safety issue for the corrections officers too. I also want to thank the sheriff for offering up, you know, positions. It meets, it's one of those things that no one knew until you had a conversation that, that you were in such need. And so providing a safe place for these folks to land, our employees to land with minimal disruption to their lives. And anyhow, so I'm, I'm hopeful that that, that we can meet each other's needs in that way. And a great type of partnership. So with that, we're just receiving a briefing. There's no motions. There's no action tonight. So thank you very much, Chief Allen. And we're going to go to council member reports. I'll just briefly make a mayor's report that next week we decided to move our meeting off of Valentine's Day. So we will be meeting on Monday at six P M. So for those that are listening, we will not be here Tuesday night, and hopefully everyone can be out celebrating with their loved ones. And then I think that's all I had. Oh, oh, no, no, I forgot. Last night I was pleased to be able to make some welcoming remarks to the Olympia Downtown Association at their annual meeting. And they gave me this hat, which I dearly love. And last year, they sold out of this hat. And so super happy that I get to have my own this year. And so thanks to the O D A. Someone's writing me notes, second class. Oh, yes, so sorry. Thank you. As well, we had another wonderful opportunity to meet with one of the other tribes in the area, the Squaxton Island Tribe. We do try to do at least one meeting council to council a year. And so this one we hosted and had a wonderful meal, literally broke bread and talked about our mutual goals and partnerships that we have going forward. And I, I can say, you know, in my time on council, that this is the strongest our relationship has ever been, and it just feels really gratifying. So thanks for reminding me. All right. So I'm going to go to my left.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
Right. Councilmember Wen.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Partially.
Just when you thought you were going to get away with no reports. Mine are short. The, the first one is finance next week will not be meeting due to requests from staff to rearrange some of the presentations. I let the committee know earlier, it just didn't look like we were going to have enough to meet. We are going to have a couple of long meetings coming in the future, but we will be, once again, coming back together in March. I am going to report out on Joint Animal Service Commission. We got the year in review, couple of cool things. We did have less surrenders and increase on returns to animals. It was fifty percent less than the twenty nineteen, which is the year before the pandemic. So the value of pets in their homes has increased. We are essentially a no-kill shelter, which means we are doing greater than ninety percent adopting out, fostering, or returning to homes, which is fantastic. We did appoint a veterinarian in a long open position on the Joint Animal Service Commission. And we have a new Humane Society veterinarian. So this is a veterinarian-rich commission now. And Gary Edwards, Commissioner Gary Edwards has joined us. Now, there's two things that I wanted to talk about. The first is, is a little unfortunate, reminds me a little bit of our jail. We are going to have to put an additional hundred and fifteen thousand dollars into the building to even keep the sewer running. The Lacey has done their assessment of buildings, and next to their police department, this is their worst building in their stock. And at this point, it is And at this point, it is felt that the building may not be able to be rehabbed. Um, so we will be looking at the potential. We've got an RFE, RFP out to, uh, we're gonna put that out this year to see what a new building would be, whether it should be on this property, or we have to buy a new property. Um, so that's a big deal. That will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in less than a, a year and a half. We've put into the building just to keep it occupied. The last one is, if you wanna see a really cute thing for Valentine's, they have on their Facebook or social media a kinda mock-up from Tinder, which is you can swipe to look at pets that are up for adoption, so you can get their profiles. And it's very cute. There's a couple out there. They've actually, since they've put it up, they've adopted three of the hardest-to-adopt uh, dogs, and they're in homes. I'm very happy.
Puppy Tinder, is that what I'm hearing? All right. Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Partially? All right, Councilmember Payne.
Nothing to report, but um, just a sincere uh, thanks to the Squaxton Island Tribe and to the Olympia Downtown Alliance for two great annual meetings. Um, I left both of those mealing, meetings uh, feeling really inspired about um, our collaboration as a community to make this place better. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Madron. Just one thing briefly, um, I had the opportunity to visit the construction boot camp. Um, it's the um, part of our Olympia Career Hub, which is a, a partnership with the Thurston Chamber of Commerce, uh, taking place at the Armory. There is a cohort of folks uh, there who are um, as uh, uh, I guess, kind of as interns learning construction skills uh, to get more people into that industry. Um, the woman who is leading the uh, the program there, Amber, is just absolutely dynamite. I know that there's another tour scheduled on Thursday, and if anybody's um, I very, very much recommend it. And also you'll see on, on the dais there, um, I left uh, the, there's uh, saved the date for the graduation of this first cohort. I believe there's gonna be three more. Um, it's March tenth, eleven AM to one PM at the Armory, but it's a really, really fantastic program. Getting people, um, getting people who need to find a career into um, a, a sector where we really need a lot more workers. So, um, that's my report.
Thank you. City manager, your report. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Gilman.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Selby. Um, first, I, I need to report back on my visit to the Olympia Regional Learning Academy at the behest of a student named Archer. Um, several of the students are interested in taking our jobs eventually. That was good news. Um, they have broad support for a swimming pool in Olympia. And they had a suggestion, and that is if we were to build a stadium that was big enough and beautiful enough, do you think we might attract the Seahawks to move down here? So, that was, that was the interest of the Orla class I spoke to. At, at inner-city transit, um, there was a, a kind of a, a sweet graduation for the first class of, um, of uh, two thousand twenty-one, um, who uh, you know, graduated some time ago. And just last week had an opportunity for an in-person graduation event. That was, that was great. The Thurston Regional Planning Council met last Friday, and most of the meeting was a briefing on the Deschutes Estuary as a preferred alternative. And it was, it was, it was a nice culmination and a lot of questions from the different jurisdictions across the county. But very, very encouraging to talk about, this is the preferred alternative and we're moving forward. So, I was, I was glad for that conversation. And lastly, I attended the, um, the, the West Side Capital Mall Triangle Subarea Plan uh, open house meeting. There were over fifty people who showed up at the meeting room at Capital Mall. And um, I just wanted to briefly summarize what I understood was sort of the intent of the project because there were many people who had all different kinds of understandings of what the project is and what kind of feedback we're seeking. So, the, the project is a really broad look at what is the Capital Mall and, and the related triangle down, down to the intersection of Black Lake and Cooper Point, up to the beginning of Mud Bay Road, the Safeway there. That, that whole huge triangle of big box stores. Um, but it's, it's five-lane roads, it's huge parking lots today. Um, and there's very limited street connectivity. The, the intent of this, this planning exercise is to consider whether uh, transitioning the area to mixed-use buildings, residential and commercial and professional all mixed together. And a grid-based street network might create more of the kind of development that makes sense to us and might provide more access to housing for folks. So, we're, we're not building buildings and we don't expect this transition to happen quickly. This is over many years. But we wanna set the stage for the, uh, the possibility of that kind of growth. So, I, I just, I just wanted to, to shout that out. And that's all I've got this evening.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Now, onto our city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one item. Uh, the last two Friday evenings, I had the privilege to go on some ride-alongs with a couple of officers from our police department. I wanna thank Officer Kim Manning, and I wanna thank Officer Nick Smith for letting me tag along with them for about three or four hours on the last uh, couple of Fridays. Every time I go out, um, I learn something new about how we do things and how we police in Olympia. Um, I wanna thank them for their professionalism that they displayed on every interaction that I saw and witnessed um, with them and the care with which they showed uh, members of this community with those interactions. Um, it's also a great opportunity for me to learn more about them, not just as um, police officers, but who they are and what they represent, and who they are as coworkers for, with me. And uh, again, I just wanna thank them for, for the time and, and uh, thanks Chief Allen for um, all the work you do with our police officers because the training and everything they're doing, um, it just shows up. And um, I just appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. All right, so that concludes the regular business portion of our, of our agenda. But we do have a, an executive session scheduled to discuss a real estate matter. So, we will be recessing and reconvening upstairs in room four oh, four twenty-three, I know, four twenty-three, uh, for no more than sixty minutes, at the conclusion of which we will be adjourned for the evening. Thank you.